Very good. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento SCD Council will please come to order with the clerk call the roll so that we might establish a quorum.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ashby is expected momentarily. Councilmember Laloie is expected momentarily. Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Vice Commissioner?
Here.
Councilmember Gata?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
Present.
And Mayor Steinberg?
I am here. Again, good afternoon to everyone and happy new year. Welcome back for our first meeting of the year. We want to start this meeting with a new and very, very important tradition, and that is to acknowledge the land from which we sit, although I know we are all tuning in by Zoom, but symbolically and otherwise. I know I'm at City Hall, maybe some others are as well. This is going to be part of what we do as a city, and it should not be rote. We should hear the words. We should think about the words. We should reflect on the words, and we should challenge ourselves to understand that history and to do all we can in every meeting, in every way, as city council members, as mayors, as a city, to move the arc of, move the arc towards justice. And that's the opportunity we have here. I would like to, and I want to thank Councilmember Mybang, my co-chair of the racial equity committee for leading on this and on so many other pieces of this. And I would like to ask Councilmember Valenzuela, Katie Valenzuela, if she would do us the honor of reading the land acknowledgement for the first time here.
Thank you, Mayor. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal land. To the original people of this land, the Misanan people, the Southern Maidu Valley and Plains Miwok, Hatwin-Win Two peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives? Thank you. And now for the pledge of allegiance. Do we go straight in, Mr. Mayor?
Why don't we, well, since the tradition, the, why don't you do the pledge of allegiance, if you will?
Okay.
Thank you.
Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank, thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela. Members, I know Madam Clerk has a couple of announcements about two of the items on the agenda that I think we ought to deal with right now, because there may be people on hold or waiting for a long time to want to be heard on items that we're not going to take up tonight. And so, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, on the consent calendar, item 15, which is purchase and sale agreement, city properly located at 3625 Fong Ranch Road. Councilmember has requested that that be continued. And then, item 20, which is a public hearing, rehearing, third-party appeal, Curtis Park Village Fuel Center. That has been requested for a continuation from the applicant, and so it will be continued by rate.
Okay. So, we do need a motion on continuing item 15. Is that correct?
We can't, we don't. We can do that as part of the consent calendar.
That's fine, then. Okay, very, very good. So then, we have the consent calendar. Are there items that any member would like to pull off and/or to discuss separately? I know that there is, there is one I want to talk about, but go, go, and that's item eight. I just want to speak to item eight. Anybody else? I see Councilmember Valenzuela. Go, go.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item 14. And is it possible to do public comment on that separate, or do you need to keep it?
Um, I think we'll take all the public comment, if that's okay, for the consent calendar. It's just a little more fish. Everyone will be heard in the same, you know, I think in the same way. Okay. Go, go. Uh, I've got, who else? I'm looking down the line here. I don't have anybody else that I see. Okay. So, are any, nobody wants to talk on any of the items. Let me just then speak on item eight, and then what we'll do is take a, a motion and a second on the consent calendar. We'll, we'll take public testimony. And then, well, now that I'm thinking about, I'm sorry, Councilmember Valenzuela, maybe what we'll do is have you present, or at least express why, why you wanted to pull it off, and so then we can, the public testimony can have a point of reference, if that's okay. Okay, so let me, I'll talk about eight, then you talk about 14. Okay. So, on eight, I just, you know, enough, there's enough challenging news and difficult news and hard challenges. I just wanted to highlight that when it comes to economic development in this city, real economic development, there's a lot that is going on without the government. All the housing starts, all the construction. But sometimes the government and the city government plays a lead role in helping facilitate even more positive growth, and certainly with the rail yards. Though we had a setback this year, as you know, maybe a temporary setback, on the soccer issue, we continue to push hard for redeveloping in very significant ways the Sacramento area rail yards. And in that light, I want to thank Governor Newsom, and I want to thank the state legislature, but specifically Governor Newsom, for agreeing to a $30 million request that is going to go right into the rail yards infrastructure. And when you combine that with the enhanced infrastructure finance district that we're talking about, we've got a tremendous opportunity to jumpstart real development, by the way, including housing and affordable housing in the rail yards, and a hospital, and, and, and great entertainment venues, and yes, stadium. And we've got work to do, but this $30 million is going a long way towards making big things happen, and I just wanted to highlight it and to say thank you to the governor and to the legislature, and to the Department of Parks at the state level. So, thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela, why don't you talk about item 14?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, this item is whether to seeking approval to accept just under $2 million and a grant to add 15 more police officers to our force. This comes with, however, a requirement that we commit just over $8 million to maintain those positions out of our general fund. And I just needed to say, before I make my request here, that we keep increasing funding in officers, but the crime rates are going up because crime doesn't have anything to do with how many officers you have to respond to it. It has to do with deeper social issues from drug and alcohol abuse to lack of mental health services, or youth supports, or housing, or economic crisis, just to name a few. And I find a little, more than a little ironic, that part of the justification for this funding in the staff report is that it will provide officers to establish relationships with community groups working to interrupt youth and gun violence in our community, when those community groups have been very vocal in asking us for more funding to maintain and better staff their programs for themselves. But rather than give them the money that they need to do their jobs and prevent the violence, we're going to be using over $8 million in general fund money to hire more officers to work with them. $8 million would be transformative if invested in the work that those CDOs are doing. We could save so many lives, get so many young people on the right track. Instead, we beg for maybe a million, and then we give $8 million to law enforcement to work with those groups. The resource disparity is really stark, and those groups have all of the community relationships, all the expertise in how to intervene, get the intel, and stop the shooting from happening in the first place. So, this is frustrating to the work that these groups have been doing. And based on the pennies that we gave them, I think it's insulting that just a couple of weeks after these same organizations stood in front of City Hall after the murder of another, another young person, to call on us to give them more funding, that we're turning around and giving more funding to the groups that aren't, don't have the expertise to do the work the way they do it, which is why our police department partners with them in the first place. So, I just want to say that addressing crime doesn't mean putting more money into responding to it. It means investing in the things that cause it to prevent it from happening in the first place. So, I can accept us accepting this grant money when I know what $8 million will do to actually keep my community safe if invested in these community-based organizations. So, I would actually like to move, Mayor, that we reject this $2 million grant, rather than accept the funding. Thank you.
Okay. I think it would be appropriate to hear from either the city manager, the police chief on, on the item. Our new police chief, Chief Kathy Lester, welcome to you, and of course, Mr. City Manager. Why don't you present, if you will, because Councilmember Valenzuela has raised a significant point here, and what is your response?
Well, I'm going to let Chief Lester respond, too, but I will start by saying this is a grant that we've taken advantage of over the last several years, as far back as I can remember. And it is an opportunity for us to have three years of an officer paid for, the cost offset. And Councilmember Valenzuela is absolutely correct. It's, over the course of the grant period, I think $8 million is the right number. I haven't done the math on it. I think it's in the report. But we're required to have a one-year retention, and that these, these funds, these grant funds cannot be used to supplant the, the general fund and basically our base budget. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Lester.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Initially, I'd like Natalie Weaver, who is our administrative officer, who was in charge of applying for the grant and has managed these grants for a number of years, to just give us a brief description of the grant and the platform that we applied under. Natalie?
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager's office. My name's Natalie Weaver. I'm the administrative officer of Sacramento Police Department. When we applied for this grant, the Department of Justice, the specific component, the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, which is the organization that administers this funding, had some very specific goals for these programs. One is gun violence. Other things are like building trust and legitimacy within community, within communities, addressing property crime. And there was a very prescribed list of categories for which we could have applied for funding. And as Chief Lester has shared, as our retired Chief Hahn has shared, that we've seen a lot of gun violence in recent years. And the goal behind this program is to provide resources specifically to law enforcement agencies, to have more officers who are able to do more community outreach and work closely in partnership with community-based organizations as opposed to having these officers work exclusively on enforcement. And this helps us with our investigations. It gives us legitimacy and helps trust in the specific communities having victimized by gun violence. This is a program that is specifically government-to-government, so unfortunately, we can't use any of the funds to support, to support our community partners, but we do look to other ways to do that. And with that, I will return it back over to Chief Lester. Thank you.
Thanks, Natalie. Councilmember Valenzuela and members of the council, Mr. Mayor, it's not a surprise to anyone that we've seen a spike in violence, in particular gun violence, over the last year, really since 2020 is when we started seeing increases. Last year, we had 57 homicides in our city. That was the highest number we've seen since 2006, and the second highest since 1995. We've seen our shooting increases. We, through November, our stats showed that we had 240 people shot within our city. That was a 25% increase. And we had a 29% increase in shootings, as reported in 2021 compared to 2020. We've also seen an increased number of emergency calls. We're up about 4.5%, and our response time has increased about 9.5% as well as an increase in mental health calls. And while I do agree that this, to reduce violence, takes a comprehensive approach using community stakeholders, community resources, and community-based solutions, there is also a law enforcement component. And so, I feel as if there needs to be a comprehensive strategy, and that will be one of my goals moving forward on how we do this. But we are understaffed as an agency to handle all these calls. We're doing a lot of things right when it comes to de-escalation, putting the appropriate number of officers on calls. We have seen a huge increase in the number of gun seizures, and so prevention is really hard to measure. I can't give you a number on what we've been able to prevent, and yet we still see the numbers increase. These 15 officers would help us on the prevention, the intervention, and the mitigation of these violence, this violent crime, in particular gun violence. And I'm prepared to answer any questions from any councilmembers.
Okay. And Chief Lester, have you had conversations about how these officers would be deployed collaboratively, so to speak, with some of these nonprofit agencies that are referenced in the report?
We need to actually come up with a comprehensive strategy on the department side, just as how they would be deployed. But I can tell you what we have been doing over the last few years that's been successful. We, we were part of a large gang investigation, Wiretap, that took four months in partnership with ATF, DOJ, CHP, to respond to this increased gun violence. With that, we were able to take 100 illegally possessed firearms off the street. That was a four-month investigation. And then, we've also worked very hard on prevention efforts with the community. For example, we've worked with brother-to-brother extensively on gang prevention through weekly meetings, high-risk referrals for mentoring. We've been partnering to prevent violence in Old Sacramento, as well as R. and Fair Mall with our community-based organizations. We've worked with the Neighborhood Wellness Foundation, including weekly meetings, tutoring, and mentorship, and then worked on joint community events for high-risk referrals, also with the Black Child Legacy, and working with the Office of Violence Prevention to help them with their violence prevention efforts. We currently embarked on a pilot project with Highlands Charter, try and introduce and connect at-risk individuals with educational opportunities. So, those are the partnerships that we found to be very, very successful, and we will continue to do that and hopefully expand on those partnerships.
Okay. Members, I got Councilmember Harris. Well, Jeff, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, I know I did ask a question. I apologize. But maybe we ought to hear the public testimony on the consent calendar, including this item first, and then we'll turn it over to the city council.
That'd be fine, Mayor. Go ahead.
Go, go, go ahead. How many people do we have signed up to speak, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have eight people signed up to speak. The first one is PJ.
All right. So, item 14, police budget increases, crime increases. Police budget increases, crime increases. Record police budget, crime increases. Police don't prevent crime. Community orgs do, and have shown they do. Police have no evidence that they do. In fact, they have evidence to the contrary. So, here's why accepting that $2 million grant is bad policy. You're permanently saddling us with the additional positions which will need to be paid for every year. And getting paid for them once, you are defunding our communities to the tune of $8 million once this grant goes away and forever going forward. I would rather see you reject the money and spend the millions that you appear to believe that we will have in the future to pay for these positions, and instead spend that money in communities who desperately need investment, who desperately need a legacy of racist defunding to end by helping their communities and their organizations succeed and give them what they need in order to survive and thrive, and ensure that those most desperate in those same communities don't have to resort to crime. Because here's what you don't seem to get. Policing begets crime. Crime wasn't as frequent prior to divesting of investment in communities, because communities were communal in nature, and they cared about each other, and they took care of each other. So, there wasn't this need for more than what someone needed to survive. However, they do require a certain amount in order to survive at a bare minimum. And what you seem to not be able to grasp is that when someone needs to survive, they will do whatever they can to survive. You seem to be operating under this notion that criminals love being criminals. And it's so awesome that many people want to go into that line of work. That's not the case. People don't want to be criminals. People just want to be able to survive and thrive. But every time you take this money away from communities, you are necessarily creating more criminals as you remove the very resources that they require in order to survive. You were saying we would rather take money from your community to pay for your incarceration than we would just invest in your community so that you never have to resort to crime. Every time you vote for one of these measures to increase police pay, to increase the number of police, you are choosing to divest and defund their communities. Lastly, community-oriented policing is no police. It's providing the resources communities need in order to thrive, not taking those limited resources from these communities and using it to overpolice them. Do better.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Stop putting this stuff on consent. It clearly...
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Casey Thompson.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Good evening, council. Yes, I, like PJ and Councilwoman Valenzuela, am speaking in opposition to item 14 on the, on the calendar here. Yeah, I don't believe this item should have been placed on the consent calendar, as it requires a commitment of over $8 million from the city to continually fund additional police officers that we frankly don't need. You know, increasing the number of police officers is not in any way correlated with decrease of crime, violent or otherwise. Police spend less than 5% of their time responding to violent crime, and most of that time is taking reports after the fact. This money would be much better spent in community services to, to help, you know, our communities and prevent violent crime in the first place. Putting more people on the streets with guns and badges just simply doesn't do that. And this would be a huge waste of, of public resources, despite the modest grant money from the Department of Justice. So, I strongly urge the council to reject this, this item. And I waive the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Michelle Linton.
Good evening. I'm speaking on consent item number 10. My name is Michelle Linton. I'm the president of the Board of Directors of the Children's Receiving Home of Sacramento. CRH is a private nonprofit residential facility that treats foster youth and other children with severe trauma, substance abuse, and other mental health issues. First, I'd like to thank the council and city staff for engaging CRH in a discussion which began December 14th about the proposed location of a respite center at 3615 Auburn Boulevard, which is adjacent to CRH. The consent item 10 materials don't mention this location. However, in a meeting with our CEO and other stakeholders, the city indicated that it plans to locate a respite center at the Auburn Boulevard location for a trial period of 90 days. The population served by the respite center would include those with substance abuse and mental health issues, as the city acknowledges in their information about the center. Some of our kids have been victimized by people with similar issues, and we are treating them for the resulting trauma. Our Board of Directors has numerous outstanding concerns about locating a respite center next door to our campus. These are highlighted in our letter to the city manager and the director of community response, which is dated December 30th, 2021, and on which the city council and board of supervisors were all copied. Given my limited time, I'll address our two top concerns and refer you to the letter for the rest. First and foremost, locating the respite center directly adjacent to CRH would concentrate this area's unsheltered population and its attendant issues directly proximate to our youth. And second, we cannot afford additional security to accommodate the risk this site would pose to our campus, our dormitories, and our kids. And so, for these reasons, I hope you'll reconsider locating the respite center next door to our campus, and thank you for the opportunity to provide input into this very important decision.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Corinne McIntosh-Soko.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. As a licensed psychologist, a community mental health advocate, a mother of a young child, and a resident of District 7, I implore you to oppose item 14. Although accepting an almost $2 million grant from the feds for community policing may sound good, the fact is that accepting this money will cost the city over $8 million. By adding 15 police officer positions over a three-year period, this grant requires the city to retain and fund those positions for a minimum of one additional year. So, when you factor in the cost share and retention requirements, the total estimated cost over a four-year period is over $10 million. Now, let's be clear that while community services have been defunded, SACPD's operating budget has only increased over the past four years, reaching a current all-time high of $165.8 million. And according to the statistics cited about current gun violence in our community, clearly more funding for SACPD does not equate to an increase in public safety, and you're going to need a heck of a lot more than almost $2 million to build up community trust in SACPD. Now, it does need to be said that the city of Sacramento and SACPD recently had a lawsuit filed against them because of the biased, brutal, and overpolicing practices of communities of color that have been going on for violating our community members' constitutional rights, not to mention the millions of dollars in brutality, misconduct, and wrongful death suits. We already have trusted leaders in the community doing the work of targeting gun violence. These leaders have the trust of the community. What they lack is consistent, prioritized funding from the city. If you want to work on lowering gun violence, we need to treat it as the issue it is. It's not a law enforcement issue. This is a public health issue.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
By investing in communities, we can get to the root causes of gun violence.
Our next speaker is Shelby.
Hello?
Shelby?
Can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Okay. I'm calling in in opposition of item 14. It is deeply unwise to spend so much money to only bolster the huge budget which the SACPD already has. This year has, from what I've seen this year in the city, is people are getting squished more and more by the, the needs of COVID, the restrictions of COVID, and protecting your health, the restrictions of needing to pay for survival just to live in safe housing, in, in, with good food, with nutritious food, have time to make this food with families. And the police have only been, have only been part of that constriction. They have only been part of the violence of putting people more and more into survival mode and more in, like their life, and in the situations of their lives being threatened. We need more money for housing. We need more money to, to take care of the people in our city. We're not threats. Like, calling us, calling people criminals, the unhoused, the unsheltered, and just locking them away will never solve the issue. We're a community, and we need to make sure that we all survive in this. Survival is a shared burden, not an individual obligation. Police do not help this.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Action Fitness.
I'm calling to comment on item 14. I'd also like to note that I don't feel this is an appropriate item for the consent calendar and really involves a lot more conversation. This grant is defunding our future community programs by $8 million at least, which means more crimes of survival. Our police budget is already an all-time high, over $165 million. And Kathy Lester admits that there's been a huge increase in crime in spite of the increase in the budget. She also notes an increase in mental health calls, and we know that law enforcement is simply not qualified to handle these calls. Due to the history and ongoing policy of racist policing, they do not have the skill set to build trust in community. They need to take their $165 million budget and figure out how to do better. Taking $8 million from the community program does not build trust. Please vote no on this item. And Kathy Lester, if you'd like to build trust in the community, please stop supporting stealing more money from our community programs and inserting police officers where they're not needed.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is a phone number, last four digits, 8922.
Hi, good evening. Hi, good evening, council. This is David Nelson, Director of Public Policy and representing the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce, calling in support of item 14 from the consent calendar. We do believe that this is a comprehensive and wise step that the council is considering to protect our communities, and most importantly, from our perspective, our small businesses and minority-owned small businesses. To be brief, a safe city is a healthy city, and this is not a fix-all solution, but it is one critical and necessary tool to ensuring that the city of Sacramento is a safe city. So, again, the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce supports this item. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Leo Kendall.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Leo Kendall, and I am the Public Policy Coordinator with the Sacramento Metro Chamber of Commerce. I'm calling in to voice support, to voice our support for item number 14, the community-oriented grant from the Department of Justice. This grant funding... This grant funding will go a long way in helping keep the citizens and businesses of Sacramento safe. The business community appreciates the continued work of the Sacramento Police Department, and we believe that this grant will help further their ability to perform their mission. Thank you for the opportunity to address this body this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
All right. Thank you very much to the members of the public. Let's now turn it over to the council on item 14 or any item on the consent calendar, if you, if you choose. So I see Councilmember Harris, Vang, Laloie. I know I've got a comment, and I've got to figure out how I get everybody. Okay, go, go ahead, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'd like to start with the esteemed words of, of my beloved Mayor Daryl Steinberg, which is that we can do both. You know, we do invest in CBOs, and it is true that investment in communities will net results and, and probably improve public safety. We do a lot of investment in CBOs. We also spend a lot of money on police. Since the recession and all the years I've been on this council, we have been trying to build our police force back to the numbers that we had pre-recession. And even then, we had fewer cops per thousand population than most jurisdictions our size. I can tell you with, without a shadow of a doubt that the constituents, my constituents in District 3, have implored me to have more of a police presence. In the last couple of years, since, since COVID has descended upon us, the number of guns seized in the North Gate area is in the hundreds. Now, what do you think those guns were going to be used for? They were going to be used in the commissions of crimes. You know, it's, it's hard to enumerate the harm that could have come to the community if the police had not seized over 1,512 guns just in a single year. But there has been a lot of gun violence on North Gate. People have been killed. People have been shot. 240 individuals shot in a year, 57 murdered in Sacramento. The police, you know, when they do a traffic stop, they, they harvest a gun from almost every traffic stop in this particular area, and I'm sure the same is true in Councilmember Laloie's area. If, if you look at the, the chief's reports over the last year, the number of guns harvested in, in District 3, the north part of District 3, and then in District 2, has been extraordinary. My constituents regularly say we need more police, our, you know, the, our business community saying they need more help with many issues, but crime is, is a focal point. Look, I believe in investing in our community, but I also know full well that even with investments in CBOs, the benefits from those investments take a long time to realize. We should do both. We can do both. But our police force is still at a population that is below the population of police of most cities our size by a fair amount. I, I absolutely support receiving this grant and applying it to hire more officers. There is an upper limit to how many officers that we should hire, but we're not there yet. And I, I have to tell you that, you know, as far as behavioral health issues, it is true that the police are not really the, the right agency to deal with those. That's a separate issue. But I can tell you with certainty that when a person takes a gun and victimizes another person, that is a choice. Once a person crosses that line and becomes a criminal who is willing to commit that kind of act of violence, you can't just simply say that eliminating poverty will take that choice away from them. It's not so. You know, there is a criminal element that will always be there, irregardless of our investment in our communities, which, again, I believe we should maximize. At the same time, the need for a police force, and I believe our police force is one of the very best in the country, and I'm very excited with the appointment of Chief Lester as well, because I think that she'll take our force in a very good direction that is benevolent to the community but also protects them ably. I, I absolutely support item 14, and I, I think it's, we're very fortunate to be able to receive a grant of this size to help us build back our police force. You know, different people will have different ideas about where that tipping point is. How many officers create the maximum public safety? How much investment in communities is the right amount? But when you get a windfall in a grant, I think we should take advantage of it. And I can tell you, I want our brave police people, and believe me, they are very brave, because every time they pull somebody over, they don't know if someone's going to pull a gun on them. But the number of guns they have harvested just in the North Gate area, it, it actually, it gives me pause. You know, these police officers put their lives on the line every single day, and all of those guns that they harvest off of these traffic stops, they are not going to be used in the commission of violent crime. The last thing I'd like to say is that the statistics totally bear it out, that most of the victims of gun violence are persons of color. And that's significant to me, you know, because I represent an area in North Gate that's largely Latino, and there's just been too much violence there. My constituents are asking for help. They're asking for police presence. They want them to continue to do this good work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Vang. Councilmember Vang, are you having technology challenges?
Yes, I just realized I've been on mute this whole time when I was speaking. Thanks, Mayor. Really appreciate it, and also want to thank Councilmember Valenzuela for pulling this item. I'll, I'll try to keep my comments brief. First, I just want to thank all the public, the public folks who, who called in to make public comment on this item. I think I've shared this before, but I also want to, to share again that many of us have really have become reliant on law enforcement, and I have shared over and over again that I truly believe that we can really reimagine together based on facts and evidence-based approaches, the ways in which we need to increase quality of life for our families. If we were a city based on data and fact, and we really looked at the data, research have shown over and over again that increasing police doesn't actually make our community safe. And research also tells us that more cops necessarily doesn't mean less crime. As you mentioned, even with increased funding in our police department, crime has gone up. Also, given that my colleague had mentioned ratio and population size per police department, I want to share that when you actually look at various studies, they've actually found that when you actually control for spending for increased population, there's still no significant correlation between overall spending and violent crime rates as well. And so I wanted to share that. I grew up in Oak Park and Metta View, and I know for me as a child, I know having officers actually didn't make me feel safe. What made me feel safe was actually having playgrounds that I, that I could, that I could go to, where parks were, were, were lighting up. And I want to commend Councilmember Chenier for pushing for a resolution for us to define public safety outside of police and fire, and that is what the purpose of that resolution really calls for. I believe there is a better model for public safety, and that is strengthening our communities and investing in critical safe, social safety nets. We need to invest in prevention and violence and, and violence interruption programs to reduce violent crime. We need these vital safety services. And for me, until we can make that type of deep investment in our communities, I too will be voting no. Another reason why I will be voting no is because this is a one-time grant, and I just want us to be cautious that this will require ongoing funding to support these positions. And while we have begun to make investment in critical services, supporting our CBOs, as I mentioned earlier, until we make those type of deep investment in our communities, the same kind of investment that this council and previous council have made in PD, I too will be voting no on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Laloie, okay, that's the only one I see other than Councilmember Valenzuela, so I guess then I will go, I will go next. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, thi- this is a topic that we've kind of spent half of the year last year on and the other half, obviously, the, the, or on, on, unhoused commu- community. If anybody watches the news today, cities that decided that they don't need the police are literally coming back today and begging for more policing involved. San Francisco is an hour away. Once a prominent city, today, it's a city that's really, it's sad to see what's happening to that city. It's sad how crime has taken over, and it's interesting how the mayor, who was not so much for the police, actually came back and now is begging the police to come back and actually save the city. But if you look at all these cities in merely 2021, whether it's New York, San Francisco, Portland, Seattle, these are the cities that thought that police are not really there to deter crime, and now they're finding out that that's not the case. We do need the police. I'm a strong supporter of the police department. My district, District 2, does want the police department, and whether thi- this is a grant to increase our force and hopefully we can increase it even more, that's what city of Sacramento needs today. A robust police department with proper training, with some, you know, new guidelines and, and a reform within the department. As my colleague Jeff Harris indicated, I, I think we have one of the top police departments in the nation, and I'm very proud of them. Now, with any organization, whether it's the police department, city, or the church, you always have some bad apples that exist, and I think our focus should be on how we can get rid of these bad apples to make the department even stronger and better than it is. Should we invest in community organizations? Absolutely. But does that investment means that we got to take away from the police department? Listen, when I see a police car, I definitely sleep much safer that night. And again, I think, I, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of my district, my residents. I have yet to go to a community meeting where a single resident is coming up to me and saying, "Why did you, you know, support that, the funding to the police department?" My district, you never hear that from. Now, we get the calls on weekly basis, the minute the topic of the police gets on the calendar, on the agenda, and these are very isolated areas that we're getting the calls from. And bottom line of it is, this is 2020. We have a brand-new chief, which, by the way, mega congratulations to you, and we really need to kind of understand that this department is not going away. If it does, it's the end of our city. Bottom line of it. Bigger cities that were much more advanced than we are, they tried it, they failed miserably. And, you know, I don't want to go through that, through these hour-long communications about the police department. Do they need funding? Yes. Do we need more officers? Absolutely. Does that mean we have to cut away from, uh, uh, community-based organizations? No, there's, there's plenty of money floating around our city. And I've, I've learned this from the mayor. The money is there, and we can definitely fund these community organizations. So I'm definitely in support of this, uh, i- item number 14 on the consent calendar, and I'm strongly supporting to increase the offices within the, the department in years to come. So, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you. Vice Mayor Chenier.
Thank you, me, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to vote to support this because I, I think it's important at this time, and I, I do think that we are under-resourced and understaffed. I want to echo a few comments of my colleagues. We, we have a very brand-new police chief, and I think we need to give her the tools that she needs to be successful, and I have a lot of confidence in her about how we're going to look at community and relationships between the police and the community. Like Mr. Harris, I do get a lot of calls from people in my district who want to hire a police percentage or, or showing in our communities, and I think that that's something we need to do. But this is a balancing act. And I also want to commend a few of my colleagues, Mr. Harris, Mr. Laloie, who talked about the fact that we can do both. And what I would like to do, not tonight, but is bring forward a resolution for this council that accompanies some of the work we've done, which would require us, when we, when we put more money into police or public safety generally, we do the same percentage increase in programs for youth. If we want to hold ourselves accountable for this, and, and I heard, again, over and over in the last 10 minutes or so, that we can do both, that we do fund our community-based organizations. We've started. I think we have a long way to go, but I think we need to balance that so that we can do both, so that we can have a comprehensive look at what public safety looks like. And this would be a resolution that would accompany the public safety resolution that we did pass unanimously, that said we have to look at public safety a little bit differently. So for today, I'm voting yes on this. Again, I think we need to give our police chief the tools she needs to be successful. I think that we do need to continue working on how the police work with our communities. I believe that we can be successful there. But what I will be bringing is a resolution that says if we're going to do percentage increases on the police, we do at least the same percentage increase on youth programming. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I see Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a great conversation, and every time we have it, I'm encouraged, because I listen to my colleagues and I hear both sides of the equation. I do think we can do both, and I think we should do both. But I don't think, based on the fact that we are understaffed at this point in time, that we can take away from our policing, having more police officers on the street to be able to do what is, what needs to be done. When you take a look at the numbers in every public safety area, our numbers are up in every single one. And so that's not only over last year, that's over the last two years. Our numbers are significantly up from guns to homicides to gun violence. I mean, you name it. And so I think the police did the right focus in the area that they bring in as far as focusing on the area that they focused on. I, I strongly believe in having nonprofits work with police in order to become a part of the solution. I believe that. But when you're understaffed, how, how do you make a decision as to whether a police officer works with a nonprofit or goes to the crime scene in order to be able to take care of the issue that's in front of them? We've got to get our police force back to a level where they can take care of our city and, at the same time, continue to increase the number of opportunities for community-based organizations and police to work together. So when we talked about some of the agencies, Cops and Clergy, Brother to Brother, Black Child Legacy, Always Knocking, when you start talking about those agencies, there's not one of them that will say that the police are not needed, that they can handle this by themselves. They're not going to say that. And, and I just went through this during the holiday season where these organizations worked incredibly well with those community-based organizations like Brother to Brother and Black Child Legacy. They worked incredibly well with them in order to stop some of the violence that was taking place at some of our local shopping centers. So they are doing it right now. They are making progress. When we get a full police force, we'll be able to make even more progress, and we'll be able to bring more community-based organizations to the table to be, become a part of the solution. And when you take a look at it, all the nonprofits that have been mentioned are not in all the districts throughout the city. That's something that needs to change, and we, as councilmembers, have to be the one to make that change. We've got to bring our nonprofits to the table in order to be a part of the solution, whether they get paid or not. They can be a part of the solution. It's great if they get paid, but even if they didn't, they have to be a part of the, the solution to provide public safety to the city that we live in and that we love. So I will be supporting this item tonight, and I'm encouraging my comrades to do the same.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Jennings. Maybe I'll step in here. I'd like to ask the chief a couple of questions, because I do think context, as we debate these isolated budget items, is very, very important. And the first piece of the context I want to ask the chief about is if you can give us where the city's police department is in terms of the number of funded and filled positions the city had, say, at the beginning of the last great recession compared to where you are and where we are now in terms of the number of officers that are actually deployed on our streets.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, we had an all-time high of 804 officers, and at that time, we had a variety of units that we no longer have, including a narcotics division and a traffic division. And, you know, we're obviously seeing increases in traffic collisions and fatalities as well. We never fully recovered on both the professional staff side of the department or the sworn side. This grant program actually This grant program actually provided about 60 officers in 2009 and 2011 that would have been laid off, and they were able to provide federal funding to save the jobs of those officers and preserve those for the city. Currently, we have 754 authorized positions. We just had a number of retirements, as you know, and that dropped us about 26 positions. So technically, those are filled on paper, but in reality, 27 of those are academy recruits, and 10 of those officers are brand-new officers that are in training. So our numbers are lower than the 754 that we show on paper. So we currently have 26 vacancies. We would like to fill an academy of approximately 40 if we can in this summertime, and this grant will allow us to do that.
So, but just the big picture, you're from 804 filled positions to now less than 750, is that what you're saying?
We have 754 right now, but we're actually less than that with vacancies, correct?
Okay. I just think that is important perspective. Here's the other important perspective for me, and, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Harris quoting me because I also don't believe that it is either or. It is important to me that we don't look at these decisions or these issues in isolation. When some of the callers say, and rightfully so, that this means $8 million over the course of the next four years that will not go into the community, it doesn't acknowledge that we just made a decision, for example, one decision as a city, to take $85 million out of the $112 million of American Rescue Plan money and put it directly into the community, into youth, into workforce, in the creative economy, in the small business, in the housing and homelessness. And that we are intentional, and I'm very proud of this. I think we're changing the arc of the investment strategy of this city, and we're not done yet, to think more and act more externally than internally. But that doesn't mean that having a police department that, in partnership with the community-based organizations, responding to real violence is not part of the solution. It has to be. I'm worried about all this gun violence. And if it were just a law enforcement strategy, I would reject it. But we've got millions of dollars out there for youth. We've got an RFP out there now specifically on addressing gun violence and gang violence. And I will promise you that I'm going to fight for more resources to be spent externally than I am internally. I'm sorry, Chief. But at the same time, I think this is reasonable. I think it's reasonable, especially if you're going to focus on a specific community-based issue where we collectively do not have enough resources. I think for you, as you get started here, as you seek additional funding, it is really going to be important that you draw a tight nexus between what you're seeking the money for as you're doing here and what community problem you're trying to solve. I would love a drug unit that was able to, for example, differentiate the people who are acting badly and creating a hazard for innocent homeless people in some of these tent encampments so that we're not sweeping everybody. And we don't have that kind of resource. I would like us to bring back community-oriented policing, which I know we say we have, but we really don't, in part because we're under-resourced. And so I think this is an appropriate request. And $8 million? I guarantee you, we will double that when it comes to the investments we make externally at mid-year and beyond. But we have to do both, members. It's not philosophical for me, as long as the resources are being deployed in a way that actually helps improve the public safety. And so I support, and in fact, strongly support this. But I also want to thank Councilmember Valenzuela and Vang for pushing, right? Because we do what we do here on the dais, just kind of like the justices, the court in some ways, we push each other. And we push each other, and it is a reminder that, yes, the arc of the investment strategy of this city is shifting, and it should shift because we ought to be investing in the root causes, investing in the young people, investing in housing. But it doesn't have to be to the exclusion of also making sure that we've got enough officers to be able to confiscate guns from people who should not have them. I'm an I vote. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start by making one point here, which is zero youth homicides. Zero youth homicides. This is not a goal, but something that we actually achieved in Sacramento. We did it. We know how we did it. We know who helped do it. So this isn't something that we don't know how to solve. You know, it's not something that we don't know how to address. We know how to stop gun violence. We know how to stop youth violence. We've done it in some segments of our community. We can do it. But it didn't involve having more officers on the street and involved funding the community violence prevention programs that worked, worked well, and then didn't get funded. And then we started to see an increase, and we've never met and gotten back to that level of funding, and they have been telling us and telling us and telling us, "We know how to do this. Give us the resources to do it." The other thing I want to say is that violent crime, as my colleague Councilmember Vang said, is up across the country, and it doesn't matter how many officers you have. You know, I like to be a data-driven person. And so when I talk about making communities safer, I want to look at cities that are safer than us and figure out what is it that they're doing differently. And you know what? Some of the cities in California that have less crime per capita than we do have less officers per capita as well. We're using this logic that doesn't have a data behind it. It doesn't have a baseline. We keep saying we're underfunded. Based on what? What was magical about that 2008 number that made us think that that is the goal that is going to make sure everybody is safe? I want us to do this based on what we know works. And no one's talking about eliminating SAC PD. No one's, I mean, we can take this to extremes. What I'm saying is, after two years of budget increases totaling $30 million, after a budget item last month where we approved 11 more positions, now we're approving another 15 positions, and we're using this logic that just doesn't make sense to me. And I want it to make sense. I want, I get a lot of calls around police response as well. But you know why they're calling me? Is because someone's having a mental health crisis in front of their business over and over again, and they need backup. Someone's having a youth issues in front of their businesses, and there's been fights, and there's been things that we knew were happening in old Sacramento for months before that shooting occurred, and they needed backup. And so we send in police to solve a problem that doesn't have, that's not the solution. The solution are the things that we know will help interrupt that cycle from happening so that the police don't need to be called in the first place. That's what safety means in my mind, is that we don't need to call the police because our communities have what they need to be safe. So if we really wanted to end gun violence, we would take that $8 million, and we would put it into the groups who've shown that they can do it before. And that doesn't mean, and we keep saying, "Take it from the police." We haven't given it to the police yet. This is additional money that we're talking about giving to them that we should give. And we keep saying we want to do both, but hey, guess what? That is not how our budget has been working. That is not how this has been working. We have been giving more and more and more money to a solution that hasn't demonstrated the same results. And so if that was how it was working, that would be great. But we all know that's not what we've been doing. And so if we're making a commitment tonight, I'd like to make that a part of the motion, honestly. If we want to make a commitment tonight, I'd like us to say that we're going to couple this with the general fund resources multi-year commitment that the CBOs have been asking for. But that's not what we're making the motion on. We're making the motion to give the police $8 million, and then we'll figure out the rest of it later. And so I want to call that out because when mid-year comes around, it better be at least $8 million, or else we're going to say, "See? Told you." It's one thing to say that we can do both, it's another thing to actually do that, colleagues. And we know how budgets work. We know how the demands on our finances work, and there simply isn't enough money sometimes to do both. And guess who always loses? So I just want to say that. I'd love to do both, but that's not how it works, and that's not what the data shows would work to make our communities more safe. So thank you.
I think that's a good challenge you just put forward. So, okay. Councilman Harris, there is a motion on the floor, it's going to move second by Councilmember Vang to reject the funding. I think we're going to take up 14 first before the remainder of the consent count, just because we've been into that. Is there a substitute motion? Jeff, you're on mute.
Mayor, I would like to make a substitute motion, just simply to accept the staff recommendation as written. You know, I appreciate Councilmember Valenzuela's comments. I certainly disagree with many of them, but I agree with you. We are investing in CBOs. We are investing lots of money, and we will continue to do so. That's my substitute motion, Mayor.
Bigger and larger.
There is a second to that substitute motion.
Okay, that's second by Councilmember Jennings. All right, there is a substitute motion on the floor. Let's call the substitute motion on item 14, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Lulue?
The substitute motion is to follow the staff recommendations, correct? Yes, I'm a yes on that.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right. Thank you. That passes 7-2. Let's take up the remainder. Is there a motion on the remainder of the calendar?
I'll move the rest. I'll move the consent count.
Mr. Mayor, my apologies, I got in here late. On item number 10, it stays in. I'd just like to add one comment to that because I'm getting a lot of texts. Item number 10, which is the contract for Hope Cooperative, which I'm definitely in agreement regarding the Respite Center on the old Science Building. The timeframe of that building for Respite Center is, as of right now, it's maxed out at 90 days. So I want to make sure that this contract and the timeline of the Science Center are not correlated. And so I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
If I may, yes, the contract, it includes the outreach for many different sites and shelters and safe grounds, Science Center potentially being one of them. But our commitment has been, there's a 90-day period at Science Center, and we will revisit it after that. Should we decide not to move forward beyond 90 days, those resources will be redeployed to our other sites. So they're not linked.
Thank you very much, Howard. Appreciate it.
I'll move the rest of the consent calendar.
Yeah, remember, item, one was continued, the farm ranch issue was.
Correct.
Okay. So it's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
Okay, let's call the roll on the remainder of the consent count.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Lulue?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, that passes unanimously. Which are most of our votes, by the way. So that's good. We now move to, again, item 20 was continued. Now we move to the one discussion item, which is the discussion calendar. And this is the opportunity for the mayor, subject to confirmation of the city council, to nominate a vice mayor and a mayor pro tem for calendar year 2022. And it is my honor, first of all, to say to the outgoing vice mayor, my friend, the honorable Jay Chenier, I know I didn't miss many meetings, but you are always a leader on the city council, period, end of story. And you step in as an assist me and the city and obviously your constituents in so many ways. I want to thank you for serving as vice mayor in calendar year 2021, a most difficult year, Jay. You did a great job. You do a great job always, and so thank you. I want to nominate for vice mayor, my friend, the council member from District One, the current mayor pro tem, Angelique Ashby as vice mayor. And I want to nominate city council member Eric Geta, council member District Six, as the mayor pro tem. Now, the way this has worked traditionally, you know, with a little here and there, is that this rotates. And like Vice Mayor Chenier, current Vice Mayor Chenier, Councilmember Ashby is not only short as mayor pro tem, but she also is the veteran member, along with Jay, of the city council, and steps into so many different areas of the city to help and to help me and to help the city in so many different ways. And now in her last year as a city council member, she seeks to go on to bigger and better things. It is not just a matter of the rotation. She's earned it. And so it's just a pleasure to be able to ask you to do this this year and to ask Councilmember Geta to serve as mayor pro tem. She's also active out there, working hard, veteran council member, again, seeking the, you know, bigger and better things, maybe your last year, maybe not. I know it's all depending on elections and those sorts of things. But and to the new colleagues on the council, you're going to get your turn sooner rather than later. You too will be a heartbeat away from the mayorship. And, you know, you can check in with me every morning and say, "How's your heartbeat going? How you feeling?" You know, all that stuff. But you all get your turns, and that'll be great. So that's my nominations, and I open it up to the floor for any comment, any public comment, Madam Clerk.
I have no hands raised to make comment on this item.
I'm happy to move your recommendations, ma'am. Congratulations, you too.
I'll second.
I'll second. Would the nominees like to give their formal nominating speeches, please?
Go ahead, Councilmember Gera, if you would like.
I'll just say thank you, and it's great to end the meeting before 7 o'clock as well. So, you know, thank you, and looking for to continue this great work. And great job to the previous mayor and vice mayor and the mayor pro tem.
Okay.
It sounds like Councilmember Gera and I have an agreed-upon platform, and that is try to get these over with by 7 as often as possible. Thanks for the, hopefully you will support us both. And if you do, I appreciate the vote of confidence. Mayor, I will not be checking in every morning on your heart. I'm going to assume that your tennis will keep you healthy through the end of the year, please.
Okay. Thank you. All right. There's been a motion and a second. Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Humbly, yes, and thank you.
Councilmember Lulue?
Congratulations to both of you. It's an honor to be a part of this council with you, and absolutely yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye, and thank you again.
Councilmember Jennings?
To the mayor who has built a great team around him, 100% yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Congratulations to Councilwoman Ashby and Councilmember Gera, yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Very divided vote, but it all worked out. So it's not anything. Okay, is there, is there public testament and item is not on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two hands raised. The first is a phone number, last four digits, 4366. Phone number, last four digits, 4366. It's your turn to present to the council.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis, and I wanted to send a few shouts out. First of all, I would like to start with Mayor Steinberg. I don't even know if you remember, but the last city council lasted over seven and a half hours, and I'm sure you knew that.
No, I've forgotten all about it, Lambert. No, I've forgotten all about it, Lambert, actually.
Okay, well, I tried to too, but I'm going to say this, that before you left, you made a statement that I'm sure that one of the callers, you can take care of them by buying cheesecakes. And we received so many orders just from that. And so I wanted to thank you for that. I also wanted to thank you for attending the 2021 holiday celebration at my alma mater, which is Grant High School. And you gave, my family was there and you gave us a tremendous compliment when you sampled our cheesecake. You actually was the first one to sample it. You took a picture of it. We appreciated that. And to Mr. Laloe, we wanted to thank him too because, uh, there was another event at the Robertson Community Center, which is where I secured my first lease when we started from the county. And at that event, our family was there too, a lot of our friends. We go back to 1946 in this community. And at that event, uh, Mr. Laloe had somebody film us and he said our cheesecakes were the best in the United States. That's a tremendous endorsement. And at the same time, being a founder and CEO, you want to parlay that into revenue because that's how you make a living, that's how you hire people, et cetera. And I hope you follow up and follow through on what we've discussed because we went viral in Florida, Oregon, and California. That's very difficult to do. And the Davis family is the one that bankrolled us. And I want to end by saying thank you to the millennials all over the city of Sacramento because they are the, some of the most brilliant people I've ever met. And shout out to the millennials and I hope that some people on this staff in terms of, uh, city council people, they know who they are. Let's move forward on some of the visions that I have because it has nothing to do with getting money from City Hall. It has to do with creating jobs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Brandy Tuzon Boyd. Brandy Tuzon Boyd? If you'll unmute.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Brandy Tuzon Boyd and I chair the city's Disabilities Advisory Commission. The commission serves as an advisory body to assist the city regarding compliance with federal and state disability laws. In our November 3rd letter to council, the city manager and city clerk, the commission made several recommendations about accessibility issues related to public meetings held by the council, its subcommittees and advisory commissions. We look forward to receiving a response to our letter and invite you to join our meeting 6:00 PM tomorrow for a presentation by the California Department of Rehabilitation on meeting accessibility and ADA compliance. The commission will also be recognizing aid of your constituents for their ongoing commitment to inclusion and dedicated service to the city's disability committee with the presentation of the inaugural Tim Haley Recognition Awards. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay, are there council ideas and questions? I see, who's up? I see Councilmember Vang, uh, Councilmember Harris.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I do have, uh, three requests and actually they're all related to our last caller that called in, uh, Brandy, who is the chair of the Sacramento Disability Advisory Committee, uh, Commission. Um, first, um, as, as she mentioned in her public comment, on November 3rd, um, the Sacramento Disability Advisory Commission, I'm just going to say DAC for short, uh, did send a letter to this council with several recommendation. And I just wanted to follow up and ask on record if we have sent a written response to the committee. Um, they did send that letter two months ago and they, uh, have respectfully asked for a request, a response by January 5th. And I just wanted to confirm if, uh, there will be a written response, uh, by, by tomorrow, which is January 4th.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is Mindy Cuppy, city clerk. A written response did go back to the Disability Advisory, um, Commission. Um, per a staff report, which was posted last Thursday, that is an agenda item on their upcoming meeting.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mindy. I really appreciate that. Um, secondly, um, you know, I did also have the opportunity to meet with, with Mindy uh, on some of the issue raised, uh, in their letter. And I want to also take this moment to thank Mindy really just for her work in addressing some of the concerns raised regarding public meetings, Zoom accessibility, uh, for our communities with disability. Um, from my conversation, Mayor, with both city staff and DAC and advocates, um, for me as a councilwoman, I've actually have identified that we actually have a gap uh, in expertise on disability issues citywide. Um, on the recommendations from, uh, from DAC, um, you know, they recommended that, you know, our ADA coordinator should take lead on ensuring accessibility for public meetings, but not just public meetings, because I know that Mindy oversees this, but something that's actually citywide. That includes policies, procedures, uh, and programs and that they would work directly with DAC. Uh, my understanding, um, as a councilwoman, based on my meetings right now, is that we actually currently do not have a city-wide ADA coordinator. Um, and I'd like to confirm on record if this is true or not.
Mr. City Manager?
Yep, I'm turning on my camera now. Give you one second. Yes, um, Councilmember Vang, yes, we do have a citywide coordinator through our HR department. It is also true that we have uh, people in the various departments to deal with accessibility within the various, uh, disciplines in the city. We did, uh, um, Mindy did share the staff report with us and it is something we're going to be considering as we are currently going through mid-year on potentially, uh, looking at how we can create some efficiencies, uh, maybe even consolidate. But there are some regulatory concerns with, uh, maybe pulling out, for instance, an ADA coordinator out of the Public Works Department, pulling it into HR. So it is absolutely something we're going to look at and bring, uh, bring our recognition forward as part of mid-year.
Thanks, Howard. I, I really appreciate that. I, I did learn that we do have an ADA coordinator, but this person is housed in HR and they only, um, their expertise is really around just HR, human resources. And, um, you know, given my year on council, I do believe we need someone who is an expert that can really provide support to the public works, to Mindy, to all of our various departments. Um, because I want to make sure, you know, as we're shifting to Zoom, as we're shifting to different mediums, that, uh, we're doing everything we can to meet the needs of all of our communities. I actually would like to direct this to Susanna, um, in particular, uh, because I, I, while we have a ADA coordinator in HR, I'm concerned that we don't have someone with the expertise, uh, with that lens on a citywide level to make sure that we're, we're in compliant. Um, Susanna, I don't know if you have comments on this in particular?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Vang, and, um, you know, we also advise a Disability Advisory Commission. And when this question came up, we began the research to determine, you know, what in fact, if cities meeting its requirements. And there was a time many years ago, um, when the city had the burden case in front of it, where there was more of a citywide ADA coordinator. And, um, over the years, that has, uh, uh, it, it has fallen to different departments to have different aspects of ADA compliance, but there's not any overarching ADA coordinator for the city, at least from, um, from our research. And so, um, I'll, you know, certainly we're available to work with the city manager to determine how best to do it because, um, there, there's just, there's some gaps from what we've seen based on what the city used to do.
Thanks, Susanna. Um, so this is just a request, uh, from me, Howard, in particular. Um, I know that mid-year is coming up and, um, you know, I'd like us to, to explore the possibility of actually hiring a city-wide ADA coordinator, which is, you know, according, according to the Disability Advisory Commission, they're supposed to work directly with this liaison. And I want this liaison actually to have the lens from a city-wide perspective. Um, you know, this individual should be tasked with working with DAC to ensure that we're using best practices, not just, you know, with our Zoom meetings, but really just citywide so that public works and all of departments really have that expertise and that support. Um, so I would like to make that request. We can put it on, on the, on the, on the row sheet, on the, on the spreadsheet as well, but that's a request I like to, to make. Um, because we are lacking in that. I want to make sure that we have that, um, to, to really serve our community. The last request, Mayor, I did have is still on DAC as well. Um, similar to Measure U Committee, you know, the work, the work of DAC has been incredibly important and I'd like to give them an opportunity to present to council on their work and really where we can improve as a city, um, to ensure that the public, uh, understand their role and also that, that the council understand the scope and depth of work that they do. Um, as a new council member, um, I, I did know that this existed, but I didn't really understand really the scope and depth of work that they do. And I think, uh, it would really benefit this council and also the public to learn more about, um, our DAC committee. Um, so that would be my, my last request and hopefully we could get that agendized, um, for our future meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for raising this issue. It's important. I appreciate that. Um, Councilmember Harris?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just have, uh, one brief announcement. Stanford Settlement, who, they are certainly one of my favorite providers in the city, will be offering COVID vaccines and testing on Saturday, January 6th and Saturday, January 13th from 9:00 AM till 1:00 PM. Uh, it's really never been more poignant than now with the Omicron variant. Uh, for more information, please visit my district website on the city page. And I want to wish all of you out there and my colleagues a Happy New Year.
Thank you. You too. Councilmember Harris, uh, Vice Mayor?
I, I'm gonna have to get used to that one again. I was thinking you were calling on Jay. Okay, uh, I just, I wasn't planning on saying anything but Councilmember Vang's comments are really important. Sure folks on this, in this group know, Brandy is a tremendous leader in the Thomas and a good friend of mine and, um, a really amazing mom to, um, some really, to some, to a daughter with some big challenges. And she's been, Brandy has been an advocate who has, really garnered a group of parents who have been dealing with disability challenges of a variety of types for many years. And she wouldn't call if it wasn't serious. She wouldn't engage if it wasn't important. She's not doing this for fun. She has a lot of other really, you know, big responsibilities in her world. And, um, I know everyone that calls in is really heartfelt and meaningful, but if you saw what she had to set aside to make that call, um, it might be meaningful to some of you. So at first, my first question is, Mindy, Brandy actually did not receive the staff report. So could you explain to me how that, how she could get that? Was it emailed? Is it something with, how does she? How does she get it?
So that was posted as part of our agenda for tomorrow's meeting for the Disability Advisory Commission?
So it's just generally posted and the responses are in the posting on the page?
Correct. Yeah, it's a staff report on the agenda for tomorrow night.
Okay, could you send me the link right now, Mindy? And then I'll make sure she gets it? Okay. And then thank you so much, Mindy, and thanks for taking the time to answer the questions of the group and put it in the staff report. I think that's appropriate. Just want to make sure she, she gets it with as much advance notice as possible. And then, uh, I also want to support Councilmember Vang's idea here of centrally locating ADA efforts across the city. You know, I've been here for a while, so I've worked on ADA stuff a lot. And we have some superstars on ADA, like in parks. Wow, amazing. I bet you we have one of the top ADA people in the country in our Parks Department in Jason. And there are others. But it doesn't mean that it translates across all departments or across all efforts. And city manager, just a suggestion here, but from a structural standpoint, might make sense to add that component to your equity and diversity department. Because making sure that people with disabilities have access is an equity issue. Uh, it is about diversity. It is about inclusion. And so it might make sense if you're looking for a place to land a position like that. I think you could house it there with that manager, certainly a strong management team over there. And I think you could do great work. I doubt anyone on this council is going to oppose that effort to make sure that there's ADA compliance across all of our, uh, divisions and departments and efforts. The last thing that Councilmember Vang asked, which is an opportunity to present, I don't disagree with, but Mayor Steinberg, you asked the PMPE committee to bring you back a structure for the different committees and commissions to have a way to do that. And I might respectfully ask that you give us a chance to come back to you with a proposal rather than bring committees and commissions forward one at a time. We've got ourselves a little bit.
Yeah, please.
So, but yes, to doing it. But like, give, give me a, give us a couple, you know, months here into 2022 to bring you back a solid proposal for how to do that. We're, we're working on it. Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, you're, you're up. Do you have a comment or a?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to bring to the, um, I have a board and commission and JPA appointment. Just wanted to announce to the council members that I will be sending to them the mayoral appointment roster for 2022, which is the JPAs that the council members serve on in the region and their appointments to, um, our standing committees.
Get, get ready for some major, major shakeups here. Actually, it's exactly the same as last year. So thank you.
Thank you. And that will be on the consent calendar for adoption on the 11th.
Good. Thank you all very much. If there's nothing else to come before, uh, the city council, again, a Happy New Year to everyone. Let's have a great year together. We are adjourned.